And now. Would you refer to the guns they give back for the positive recommendations?
Yes, yep.
So. I think we just get it done for them so they can move along. Um, I have to do seeker first on it. She passed out for part two. I was different, you got these of us, I mean.
Yes. You're getting down.
Yeah, my specs with this. Okay, with the both actually create a material conflict would be the way he's playing or zoning regulations. That would be no, it is um, it's an industrial area over there. It meets all zoning and requirements. That opposed action result in change of use or intensity or use of the land. Probably would be a small impact. It's a small addition compared to the uh, size of the building there. Both action impair the character or quality existing community. No. What was that? Have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause a establishment of a critical environmental area? No. The proposed actually result in adverse change to existing traffic level? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking and walkway? No. A Bose actually caused an increase in use of energy as it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities. Um, probably more energy used in the building, but however, the addition will have to meet the state energy code. Most action impact existing public water or sewer? No. Pose action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Well, that result in an impact change in natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater. Um, no. Well, that result in an increased potential erosion, wanting or drainage problems. It shouldn't be. It's just a small addition to the rear of the building. All that created hazard to the environment for human health? No. Oh, I will check. We have determined that in basic information analysis above, both actually don't result in any significant adverse impacts. Let's see.
That's what I guess.
We need a motion for that negative declaration?
Yeah, I'm just trying to people look up. So. There were motion when you second. Call the wolf for you soon.
Joe Dickinson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawken. Hi, and Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustico.
Hi.
And Steve.
All right, motion carry.
Do I need to be let you guys know that I did show up? Hello?
Hi Skip.
Hi. Sorry, took me a bit to get in. Hi.
You can't vote, you can't vote.
Alright, so I'll need a need a motion.
Unless you're dying, are you dying?
Um, you're probably better off not having me there.
Okay, so we got we'll accept this as a final site plan. Um. Authorized at twenty four by thirty six addition to the existing building. And yet, you know. Site plan was given to us last week. Last month.
I mean, will we accept the site plan for eight seventy seven eight?
Back up. Motion second, we bring discussion. All the whole place.
Joey Dickinson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawken. Hi. And Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustico.
Hi.
And Steve.
Alright, motion carried. But Greg know they're all, they're ready to, they're groomed this thing. Coming to know.
Hi.
Uh, new business, um. River referral, the village of Horseheads. Um, two twelve Fairfax Street, an area variance. Um, the property is within five hundred feet of the of the town, large, um, boundary, so they referred it to us. And we need to look at it for any negative impacts on the town or any, anything like that. And basically, their variance was for a front porch on a house.
You gotta look real hard in there because it's eight by twenty.
Yeah, it is eight by twenty, however.
It's nothing to do with us.
Really, and I already sent an email to the village about it. Personally, because they didn't cite the right code sections and if she built a six foot deck, she, she could have built it without a variance, so I mean. Tell them they need to look at your coach a little bit closer.
Yeah, and it's a little bit large for the area, but it has nothing really to do with us.
What's what's, what's unique about the lot that makes it need?
Well, it's there's the
Not, not that we care.
It's the village in our one zone, there's a thirty foot setback in front of the line. However, there's an exception in the supplemental regulations that allow a six foot deck enclosed into that thirty feet. It's rough, but not enclosed. And she's asking for an eight foot deck.
Yeah.
Not enclosed, so if she wanted a six foot, she could have built it without a, um, without a variance. So. So actually, what she's looking for is two foot variance instead of an eight foot variance what she applied for. So.
Well, it's good if they pass it, then the whole village gets a eight foot deck.
Yeah.
Do any notice, I could do that.
There's nothing.
And, and no, it is, there's no real impacts on the town. I just looked at this because, um. Years ago in the village, we had problems with houses being in that thirty foot setback. People wanted front porches, and we kept getting variance after variance after variance, so they changed their zoning. Well, that, um, instead of, I mean, grow six foot into the front setback, put a deck, deck on. So, and they didn't realize, must be they didn't, the zoning regulations are, or whatever, but, um.
He wants to get away with a whole lot more so he could go with a freestanding deck instead of making something attached to the house.
Well, she wanted rough, so he
Yeah.
Rough, you gotta tell you gotta put footers in the new lines.
Yep, 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 you're right. I forgot that.
Um, I just, I would make the motion that we need to send it, um, no comments, uh, local determination. No impacts on the town.
I'll second.
First. Joe Dickinson.
Hi.
Amy Grant, Angela Hawken. Hi, and Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustico.
Hi.
And.
Hi, motion carried. They charge two hundred and fifty dollars for an area variance.
Really?
For two feet.
Alright, moving right along. All in states in Richmond, door sixty seven North the road. Horsehead updated site plan for parking.
Yeah, you want me to come up? Hey, we have a parking problem. Which is probably good, but probably bad at the same time. Yeah, uh, and in the initial plans, we have some parking coming out by the side. And once spring comes and the thaws come, we've, we've got a plan and effective turn all our grass into park. I mean, that's a good thing. But I've been doing a lot of research in the back area. We have a barbed wire fence back there, and I think it's about time we take that down. I don't think it's a threat to our business stuff. Uh, and my buddy and I came up with a plan. We think we can squeeze nine parking spots along the back of the building. And when I talk to code, we would need an access road in there. From my understanding, uh, we pay for the materials because you have that, the ditch that we know is so popular. Uh. You know, to come into there. I, I don't even know how wide it has to be fifteen feet, like.
Marshall's gonna be what, twenty minute?
Twenty.
Why, why was where we're about?
There's lots of land.
Hey, have you talked to Marty about this?
No, I was gonna talk to him.
Alright, because probably he's gonna have to approve that road cut.
Yes.
For you, so.
And, and from the back of the building to pass, just past the telephone pole that's there, if my measurements are right, twenty one, thirty eight, thirty eight, fifteen, we have about sixty five feet. You know, obviously you don't want it right next to the building. You want it out. So I don't think that's a problem. It would just be up to Marty and the highway department to see where the best place to put it. And there's got to be some material you probably have to put because you have to, uh. Yeah.
If you could go thirty, I mean, if they lay it. Don't try not to go twenty, because that's not wide enough.
Okay, yeah, okay.
If you want to have, so do cars get in?
One in and out.
Okay, no, and that would, that would be great, I, you know. Uh, and, and I, I did a little sketch here, I like, I have nine spots. Technically, I could go right across and, and not, I have two little employee spots put in there. They don't have to be there. I could go straight across. Uh. Everything inside the fence is already stone. When we cleaned that out last year, facility, put a stone in there. There's gonna have to be some excavating. Yeah, I have to grade that little hill down, probably put some sort of wall or something there. Uh. But we don't do anything back there. Ri- right now, uh. We're probably gonna put a three hundred square foot office and storage space. I think I drew in there, or that was originally there. I can't remember. And it'll leave us with eleven hundred square feet. We don't know what to do with yet. And I talked to Greg and if, if we ever have a tenant or something in there, now we have to make sure we have some parking set aside for them and everything. But we're not worried about that. I mean, right now, we're worried about finding nine or ten extra spots. Uh. We've been good. Uh. Well, this time of year, we don't really have the problem, but I've, I've done my best. All the customers, you know, when you park on the side of the road, look out. The town, the county or something put signs along all the thicker road, no parking, and I find that interesting. Nowhere else on all the thicker road, there are no parking signs.
They've been there quite a while.
Have they?
It's because, it's because of burn area, you know.
Uh, well, no, and I just, I probably know, you know, when you get glasses.
They've been there, they've been there quite a while.
It's, 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 it seems like they all of a sudden became like a fence rather than no parking sign.
Yes.
I think they put extra up.
Yeah.
I think we gotta, we, we, we gotta go after the, we gotta go after the county to take those down.
Okay.
I don't see any purpose in protecting the commercial area from on-street parking.
No, because that, from my understanding, you can park on that road, correct?
No, there's big enough shoulder and stuff. You can park all the way down in front of all the residences you can park, and they're not trying to protect them.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're, we have a real good relationship with Fertell's. People order a lot of food from there. So I'm gonna see if maybe, it's very rare we have overflow parking, but that I, you know, trying to be, you know, sympathetic to the area residents and, uh. They could park there and just walk over. I haven't approached WNY because I just, what's, now they're crossing all the thicker road. Instead of maybe just coming across the street from Fertell's. But, but to be honest with you, even when we had our overflow and people were parking down the side road a little, I don't think it was ever any more than nine or ten cars.
And I said, so when you put maybe your, your rest of your parking in up front by the sign.
Yeah.
And then the back, that will alleviate any parking on the, um, overall.
I'm hoping, yeah, and, and I've added, uh, when you first, you know, I try to listen, when you come off full of the corrode, I've had a couple people come and say, hey, I almost hit that parked car, and I find it funny because the car's not moving, you are. And a lot of it, every, well, but they come flying in, like, there's a speed limit sign right there, and cars are just used to flying.
Oh, they never see cars parked there.
Yeah, yeah, well, so what I've done is I've had reflectors, you, you know, uh, around that whole corner. I put reflectors between Chris White's property and ours, because when it got crowded, people wanted to just go that way.
Oh.
Once in a while, I'll see one bend over the next day, but geez, you know, and I, I don't, so we, we've been trying some things. I, I think these nine spots would, would really help. I mean, I'm surrounded by commercial properties, so I don't know if there's any special things I have to consider. Would I, I'm guessing I would get some sort of survey, didn't know where the exact property line is. Don't want to cut into anybody else's property.
Yeah, um, having come to set your, set the pins for you.
Yeah.
So you know where you're at.
Yeah, yeah, I assume I'd do that. And I mean, that being said, if, if I go right by that property, can I have that stone right up? Is there, there have to be a couple foot leeway?
No, you just gotta stay on your own property.
Yeah, okay.
You can't do anything to affect the neighbors, you see, if you dug into it, if it's up with the hill or something, that's your, but if you dug in there and all of a sudden his property was starting to erode or something like that, then that might be an issue.
With some sort of supporting walls.
Yeah.
And I don't know what, how much I'd have to do with that, and I'll probably leave a couple feet anyways. Like, my neighbor Walt's been real good at mowing my property anyways in the summertime, so if I, we, I don't want to leave two feet of grass and have it not be mowed. I'm sure that'll be taken care of.
The, the town board is considering, uh, no parking on all of overlook and all of sunset. And that'll probably be done before, they'll probably be put in before April.
Okay, so even on my property?
Right now, there's no parking.
Right.
On the road because it's, it's the, it's the winter.
Right.
Rules, but the, by, by April first, it'll be, there'll be no parking all along those roads.
Even on my property?
Well, y- your property is your property, but there'd be no parking on the road.
Right, okay.
At that point.
How, how far from my property are the roads considered mile? Like, what, what does the town own? Just where the road stops, or does it go in where the?
The, the roads, the, the roadway there, I'd have to look at the deed, because it's overlooking, it has a deed, but usually it's fifty foot wide.
Okay.
So when you have your survey done, and it's on that one.
Okay.
Where, where you are. So this is, uh, I mean, they didn't put the width of the road on.
If you look at the, if you look at the drawing, if you look at the drawing, the building, the edge of the building is on the property line.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the edge of the road, yeah.
Yes.
Because there's probably twelve feet there, but because originally I was thinking of grading that out so somebody could park there, but.
Yeah, no, that's in the right way. You can, you, you, you don't have that. And one of the other issues I, I've, I've heard, and I don't know whether this is true, you can tell us that people entering and leaving your lot has been using the neighbor's driveway on Ithaca Road.
Oh, I think it happened once, yeah.
Okay.
And I have reflectors there now.
Okay.
I've talked to Chris a couple times about it. I mean, it doesn't seem to be, he, he doesn't seem to be worried other people had a bad, uh, but, yeah, I mean, I can't, I can only speak for the conversations I've had with Chris.
He's pretty easy to go.
Yeah. Uh, actually, his daughter's gonna, my coach horse said softball, she's gonna be in a program, your daughter hosts, and so yeah, he seems easygoing, you know, we're trying to, to work with everybody, and when we did this, I mean, it's a good problem we're having, but it's, it's a problem that trying to be sympathetic to other people. Sometimes I think the demands are a little, little outrageous, but, you know. Not the parking, that, that's.
Thing is, you met on parking requirements of the town.
Yeah.
In our zoning regulations.
Yes.
However. You probably down the road should look at that was, what, three, four years?
Well, the, the other issue that's come up too is, is now with, with businesses bringing in another business to operate on their lot temporarily, food trucks.
Yeah.
People come not for the business that's there, but they come for the other business. Come and leave. So we've had that in a couple, a couple areas, but we've never had a problem. Now we got a problem, so you're gonna force us to look at
Yeah.
whether that's gotta be an issue.
And we, uh. We have a two twenty outlet front where they're supposed to plug into, but the first time.
Well, you, you, you will see a rule or regulation come out that no generator is going to be allowed to operate those things.
Uh, for food trucks and
Food, food trucks in general, and it's probably gonna be more related to uh, being near residential areas than, you know, than, than, you know, like out on Ithaca Road, the guy isn't really near a residential area, he's in an all-business area. You got a residential area next door.
Across the street.
Yeah.
But he's my best customer.
It's fine.
I know.
That's fine, but you're just making every, you're just making, it's just, it's just because of the size, because of what's going on, it's just making it look at, and
Yeah, no, that, that's fine.
One of these come, come to fruition, it'll be, it'll be a question, but.
You know, it's amazing that the occupancy stuff's pretty spot on, whatever your formula is, because I get nervous when it gets crowded. And the most I've ever counted, sixty six people inside, but we're not, like, people drive themselves a lot. So there's sixty six people, what, fifteen of them came with somebody else, that's still like thirty eight parking spots or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been more than that when we have the outside patio, uh. But, uh, some of that. I mean, between Fertell's, if they, I don't, it's, they have every right to say we don't want people parking there, but, uh.
Well.
That would be a very special.
The, the interesting about Fertell's is that they're not in a business zone.
Really?
No. That's residential.
That's neighborhood service.
And so I, I think we might have changed it.
Yeah, so how did they have a restaurant then?
Yeah, well, that started as a store a hundred years.
Yeah, no, there is.
So it's, so it's been there, yeah.
God.
Neighborhood service.
Yeah, I think we did change that zone into neighborhood service.
But between us and them, if people were parking there, we don't have a problem with that, or?
If they were parking in their lot?
If they had, if we had permission.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I don't care about permission. I don't care if they park there anyway. That's up to him and you, not
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah. Uh. But the ten, I mean, if you think about it, when we were busy in the summer, you could have five or six cars to start approaching Walt's property, and then you'd have maybe five or six that could down sunset, and it just looks packed, you know?
Mm-hmm.
If we can get squeezed ten spots back here, I think that alleviates a lot of it. And, and when I have a real parking lot, you know, I've done my best all winter to try to paint the grass that doesn't go that well. I'm nervous this spring, it's gonna be a quagmire when it thaws, you know? Short-term problems, I'm not worried, but with, with standard lines, you know, in and outs. I'm happy, you know, it's, it's been a fun place for, like I tell people, we don't sell beer, we sell unique self-port experience that brings, brings friends and connections. It's been a lot of that. Watching people put chunky blankets together, I've, I've learned so much. Sharkly, we have all these activities there. It's been fun.
Yeah.
I don't understand half of them, like painting stuff. I just clean up them up, watch them. But again, uh, I mean, the issue's parking, and we want to do our best to everybody out.
So really, no action by us, just to give an update of what you're trying to do for parking. Um. First thing you need to do is check with Marty, the commander of the highway superintendent, and see if he's gonna give you a road cut up there.
Okay.
And, um. Then you go on from there.
Okay, and, you know, I just saw Walt the other day, because someone stacked all the cones outside of the crowd. And so he asked me, but I'm not coming on your property, no offense. Uh. It's worrying about people on his side, like kids and stuff, and we, we put an end to that, you know, it's hard to control parents, but pretty much our whole outdoors and the right of the building and the back will all be crushed down. And it's gonna make it easier. I, I'm trying to avoid putting other fences in. Uh. You could put up a class, but the crushed stone's gonna keep kids from running around. Why, it'll be easier. So I'm doing my best.
Yeah.
So. But yeah, the parking.
Well, he could have bought it, who?
Right? I'd love to have this building, be awesome.
Yeah.
And White's house, and have the whole.
Yeah, well, you know, real quick, not take a bite.
Extra property.
Yeah, yeah, then I have no parking problem, uh. People come in and want to play live music, like, we're not a live music establishment, we're not gonna have that in the summer. We're not, that's not our scene, it's what we just. We're not trying to really expand, we're just trying to maybe make some money off the rest of the building, but right now, the parking's what we're trying to address, keep the neighbors happy.
Hey, I appreciate you coming in, having a planning to look forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
And.
You know anybody that needs a barbed wire fence?
People won't.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
He is.
Well, you know, when our kids were young, he let a slut on his hill all the time. That's the irony of it all. He's built ramps, Lord knows what the kids went home with, all bloody, us dads, you know? And it's just, times have changed a little. He doesn't mean much.
You can get older.
Yeah.
You know?
We all kind of.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, it was great when we talked in person, that made a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I teach my students.
Alright, well.
Something that might help you too is once you get to the point where you realize where your property pins are, you can see it a little better, I think.
Yes. Yeah, and I, I was, like I said, the measurements are within a foot, because I was pretty close to remembering where they were. Who, who, who does that? The pins, do I have to get a survey?
Services right down here.
Oh, whoever did that.
Who did the last one?
That's easy.
It could stand right back or something, who did the last one?
Yeah, so.
Um, yeah, twin tiers, they're right in the square.
Gotcha.
Simple.
Just tell me you need your, your, um.
You just need an update, then.
I kicked myself, they were there when we thought the place was summer, but we put them out. How hard is to mow around them?
Well, with metal detectors.
You didn't take out.
No, no, the, the little flags.
The flags, yeah.
So I use the metal detector to find the pins.
Or just, you know.
I can say I could have one from Amazon.
We, we had, we had, we had an issue, we had an issue with, uh, years ago with that neighbor's fighting over it. So the one neighbor would go out and always would pull the pins, which, which is, was just criminal. I mean, you know, try to get somebody to prosecute. So what Denny Whelan did years ago was he, he put in a pin, then he put in a second pin driving the first pin down. So that they're, they're, they were stacked, and the guy said, well, the, the pin's over here, I, I, I found it here. Well, no, the pins are for here. And it's still there at that point in time. It was funny. It's, it's solved, and he died five years later. All things get resolved.
Alright, I appreciate you coming in, and, uh, let's keep, I mean, contact with Greg, what you know going on. Is you, you'll have to write to the driveway for a minute.
Okay, I'll talk to Marty first and then go.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. We're excited to clean it up some. Alright, thanks, have a great night.
Bye. Let's hope for spring.
Yeah.
We got one more thing to do here. I have new business, we gotta add on, actually, it's well, new old business. What we need to do.
Now.
Do you have to make a motion to John to, yeah?
She's. The, the solar things.
Oh, why?
We didn't do it in, apparently, but I thought, I thought we did this the meeting before.
I thought we corrected that last meeting.
That, not last, the meeting before that, yeah, because I wasn't at your last meeting.
Right.
But I thought we corrected that in December.
We did.
We did.
We did?
We did.
Yeah, okay, we'll go back and re-operate on those minutes. I, we passed it and then, yeah.
Yeah, I remember them coming back and we did the whole thing over again.
Yes, so we'll, Tina and I'll sit down and we'll operate on those minutes and get those squared away, so.
This rapper reached out to me about reaffirming um, the final site plan. And so I sent it to John, I'm like, I don't know.
I thought we'd.
I thought we did.
He sat here.
We had did it, we had did it, we did it right, because he watched over us and we were all sitting there making sure that it was done in the proper order, because we have to do the secret before we do the site plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we just do each other minutes reflect.
We'll get, yeah, we'll get the minutes straightened around, and then the minutes can be accepted at the next meeting.
Alright, we'll do that, okay. I'll put that on here.
Anything else about, what are they, how are they coming out being? And breakfast for the Georgia room, you know?
Uh. Um, Catlin pastors, so I've got that, I want to get, I want to get that back, back into, into you guys, so we decide, but Greg, Greg is also taking a look at, because reminds, like you said, you talked about one that's may, maybe complicated. It doesn't need to be complicated, it just like you said, you talked about one that's may, maybe complicated. It doesn't need to be complicated. It just needs to be what, what we can, what we can do at that point. And, uh, one of the other issues is making sure that they report back to the town on what they've actually done, you know, you know.
So Greg said, um, when he was up in Watkins, he has, um, firsthand knowledge of that up there, right? And I'm, I'm working open Dixie right now, and they've got a one that's sort of cumbersome, I think, doesn't doesn't really, I don't like some stuff in it, but again, they're, they're up by the racetrack, so I can see why they're doing it. Too many things that aren't spelled out properly in my, my eyes, so. Maybe I'll go and take a good look at it. I don't think we have. And do we, have we ever got onto Airbnb site to find out how many is around our sets?
Uh, yeah, I, I think in the town, uh, we've, we officially found five, I think. So, uh, and really, I think four were single-family homes, and one was an apartment in a, in a multifamily home. He had one, one single dwelling unit inside of an apartment that was, uh, available to rent, so right now would be a good time and to, to kinda get out ahead of it, um, but I don't think we're in too bad of a spot at the moment, but, but I think you hit the nail on the head, Tom, when you said that those short-term rental laws in Skyler County are cumbersome, for sure. Um, so one that's you know, a little cleaner, a little shorter and sweeter would be, uh, beneficial. So. But.
Okay, good, thanks. So we might see that down the road next couple of months.
Yes.
Okay. Um, anybody got anything else?
Yeah. I've been, um, looking, I've been looking at, um, wind farms. And we have, we have nothing in the town of Horsetown, and I just, I just, the other day was just messing around, and I took a look, the town of Elmira has eight paragraphs. And the town of, uh, Naples has eight pages. There's a big difference. And I also looked at questions about maybe what, if we decide we, if there's a feeling that we wanna look at this and pursue it, I also looked at this Fire Trace International, who's an insurance and fire suppression company that specializes in these things. And some of the things that, that they look at. And I just, you know, if, if, if we wanna pursue it, I don't mind doing the research, it's just whatever the feeling of the board is.
So what kind of windmills you talking about?
I'm talking about the large, like what you see up on.
Up in Naples.
Yeah.
So, the four hundred million acres. Going back years ago when they first came out, I just happened to think of this, that they had a windmill that they have in their ideal locations to place them. Those large-scale ones, we don't have enough wind in Horsetown for them.
Interesting.
So whether that's changed or?
Yeah, so, so we probably, before we can do anything, we should research the wind maps and see if, is it actually any, is feasible even to do it.
Is, alright, where, where can I find the wind map?
I don't remember, because it was something back when I was working.
Oh, fine.
And once I retired, I kinda got dumbing on things.
I'll, 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 I'll look at those. I, I was wondering, you know, what other research maybe we needed to do.
Yeah, but I remember this hill over here was about the only hill that would take one.
Yeah, because they get.
And we were putting the subdivision in up there.
Well, what, what also made me think about it was the fire in the, in the phone, in the equipment shack on the, at the phone tower on top of the hill.
Yeah.
You know, if, if we had, if somebody did wanna put it set of windmills up there or whatever, you know, we had a fire up there, because there's lithium batteries and all kinds of electronics and the fire sources, I was surprised when I looked in there. I didn't realize there was that much electronics inside the, what's on, up on top of the tower. Yep.
That, that light still is not on that tower.
Was that?
The light on the tower is still off. I talked to Greg about it. I figure we got an airport nearby. So, Greg, did they do anything? Did you talk to them?
Yeah, um, they're, they're still in the, so there, there was an open permit um, up there. So that's kinda where we leaned first when there was that fire, um. The contractor was not on site when the fire happened, but they have had people up there, uh, recently, uh, repairing stuff, and I think part of it is uh, why that light's not working. I did talk to the project manager who was out of Binghamton. Uh, and he said, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be a little while till the light comes back on. He did, he has notified uh, the FAA and the airport knows that the light's off. Uh, so I think as far as on our end, that's about the best I could do, but from, from what happened, i- it looks like it was, uh, caused by rodent. Some, something trying to get warm and found its way into that box and uh, started chewing stuff, so.
That's up to your net miles.
Yeah, everybody was a little nervous in the beginning, because I guess there's been a couple of these that have, uh, kinda been a target of, you know, I don't know if terrorism's the right word, but, um, people, people messing around with, with communication facilities, uh, on purpose, but there was no tracks in, there was no tracks out, um. So, you know, uh, it all kinda leans toward a, a squirrel or something getting up in that box. So.
Yeah, the, the license and FAA thing, not a town thing, really.
Yeah, so, and, and I did let, uh, I let Ryan know.
As long as everybody's been notified, dude.
Yeah. Yeah. So when they do, when, when they have the crane up there too, potentially to fix anything, and I think they gotta fly that flag on the crane, they know that, um, so they're chipping away at, I don't, I think a lot of stuff got, uh, the whole electric cabinet box up there is pretty much destroyed.
Yeah, you bet. And I've driven out there before when they first built the tower and did all that. It's quite a view from up there.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
We used to hike up there when we was kids all the time.
And then you can get to it from Hamilton's too, that side. Hamilton used to be the highway superintendent here years ago. You can drive all the way up through there.
Matt probably took his motorcycle up there. I know I did.
Couple times.
Alright, anything else? Motion to adjourn. Some move.